Okay, we're recording. So, I'll do a gavel so everybody knows we're here. Microphones on. Cell phones off.
Maybe Jason put it up on the screens.
Say again?
You know how to do it from his computer to put these on the screen?
Oh yeah.
Or do you have to find the file, right?
My computer's in the jiggle memory, it's in the disk and then you can just put it up there.
I'm sure if I can get the email in there, but...
I don't have the right plug on my computer.
Do you have a USB drive?
I have, but I don't have a drive.
I can go get one.
Could that way we can transfer it over?
Alright, so Jason's gonna see if he can get the monitors working. It's, I don't even know what time it is. It's 1:03. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Marquette, I'm sorry, it's not regularly. Work session, the Marquette Township Board. Today's Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. And roll call just shows that Clark Retaria is absent, he's sick today.
Let's put it down there.
Okay.
So we're gonna talk about strategic planning for the next five years roughly. Including the next year. Jason McCarthy's gonna see if we can get this up on the screen. Just to kinda give us an idea.
Load it up.
Dave was nice enough to update our worksheets. This is the February 10th version, is the last one I have. Make sure, oh, February 20th, sorry. February 20th. Should've been the one in your mailbox. He's gonna show it up on the screen. Yeah, he said he put it in everybody's mailbox.
I thought I took it. We think we're at the house right now.
He's typed up the goal statements and put them in the strategic action columns.
Can I just send it to you in an email?
I can't, I don't think I can. I don't think I can send him an email. I'll check them.
What if your work's showing up?
The newest one? Oh, son of a gun.
That's okay, what the hell?
No, we'll fix it.
Sign of the times.
Too much away, I had that.
Wait, I had too many?
Okay, you can't send it to me via email.
I can.
Mm-hmm.
Hi Randy. I had PT this morning, so I didn't get in early, sorry.
It's okay.
Imagine you've been on the phone anyway.
Well, we had meetings with Roger. The morning is evaporates quickly.
PT, is that peanut butter and triscus?
Shoulder pain.
Is that allowed to be discussed?
What's that?
PT?
Your comp.
No. The 900-pound elephant in the room.
Yes.
Okay. Not right now.
That's not what I was referring to, I was just going to the church meeting.
Somebody's dumping all the snow on their lot.
Well, I still remember starting that.
Okay.
The snow that he was calling out of sight, he started.
That'd be mine.
Apparently he's got to agree with that, they're not using it.
Put all that contaminated soil. In that lot.
Yeah, you're not supposed to be able to dump.
Find it.
Uh, it's updating 3.69 gigabytes of information, so it might be a bit...
Yeah, I figured the email y'all received yesterday, I did call Dennis and leave a message. That is definitely part of our strategic planning because it affects what's gonna happen with the township in the next five years, obviously. So, um, we will be on the search again for another township manager. And Randy's already made some calls, Dennis, as you remember from the email, left a gentleman's name of someone who's kind of a headhunter, if you wanna call him that, job placement. And, uh, we got, I got the proposal this morning, I don't know if you guys, did you give that to everybody?
No, I just sent it to them.
Okay. Um, he's thinking he can have somebody in place by June 15th. So, roughly four months. Um, were you, did you get any calls back from Judy or?
I talked to Judy later last night and she was gonna talk with the new...
Sheridan or whatever his name is, Neil?
Neil, she was gonna talk with Neil this morning and get back from him, but they're getting ready for the capital conference, so she said it'll probably be Thursday before she got back from me. And then now they've got weather, you know, issues and she was all concerned about that. I did not hear back from MML as yet.
Randy made a great suggestion, I thought, and just find a headhunter and have them go out and find, you know, half a dozen or 10 people and send them to us. We can kinda go through the applications or the information and weed it down to three, whatever number we want, and get them in here and interview them.
The other thing that I did last night, you remember Tara Lang that was here talking about retirement? She's the Upper Peninsula Director for Municipal and Place Retirement System. We have four other regional directors, basically lower Michigan, so I asked her to reach out to them, the people that they deal with in townships, particularly charter townships and larger general law townships, to see if there are any folks that they work with, if they know that might be a reasonable candidate for the position here. So, that's a kind of a off-the-radar, under-the-radar search, so. She was gonna have them just send me any names that they think would be a good candidate for the position. They deal with townships all the time, all day long, staff and boards both.
I'm not discounting the idea of putting an ad in the paper anyway, in case there's somebody local, if you think that would work. I don't know.
I'm gonna need to make them all.
What do you get, yeah? Well, charter township experience, much less township experience would be a plus, obviously.
Well, the thing you're gonna run to with a local, run into with a local ad is, other than in Dickinson County, you're not gonna have any potential real candidates that have charter township experience. There's only three charter townships in the UP, writing township, us and Chalkaway.
Well, have the headhunter put it in and they have to reply to them.
Well, that's what he's, that's what he proposed, in his proposal basically, Frank's proposal, is that he would place ads strategically, place ads around the state, basically, that they would reply to him, but that's, if you wanna get involved in another four-month process, I don't know if you wanna do that.
Yeah, it seemed pretty long for me.
Well, it was a $12,500 fee plus ad cost plus background check cost, so it's gonna be 15, 16, maybe 20,000 by the time you're done.
So if we could find somebody that would just, you know, like you said, MML or somebody who knows, they've got a pool already of people who've contacted them or given them their qualifications.
Well, my thought was to see if just shaking bushes a little bit brings anything before your meeting on the 3rd. If you could make a decision and report meeting on the 3rd as to which direction you wanna go. If you wanna try to do the direct headhunting or if you wanted to place an ad.
That's why I wanted to broach it here, 'cause like I said, it is part of strategic planning, it's gonna affect the township a lot. And I didn't wanna lose this whole week till, up till the board meeting, you know, so that we can chew on it and figure out the best course of action.
What's being suggested is we try to see what is available through the contacts that Gerard made. Wouldn't we do that? Wouldn't we wait till after that if we wanted to put it in the paper? We've had some experience about putting it in the paper. That weren't really, it caused time.
Yeah.
It caused delay. So, I think we need to wait, what does it sound like for our manager who's proposing he take a survey of what's available through the contacts he's got? When do you think you'd have some kind of a feel for when that would be, knowledge would be available?
Well, you have a board meeting next Tuesday.
Right.
But certainly by then.
Okay, that's, so that's not a long time to wait.
But it gets involved.
And delaying doing anything else until we hear that. And I think that we've had some experience now, it hasn't been wonderful, but the experience we've had tells us what not to do too early, and that putting it in the paper would be one.
Well, I know that few board members have said there's probably local people who would wanna apply, and I didn't wanna say, "No, we're not gonna do that," you know? If that's what everybody feels like is a good option, we can try it, it's not gonna hurt a few bucks. Just whatever, I mean, think about it. Maybe you know somebody who's interested, I don't know. It's the experience.
Now we're just rattling the question to see if anybody out there is interested.
It's the experience we have to have.
Yeah, your issue is if you're looking for a manager with charter township experience, there aren't many of those in the local area, you know, there just aren't. Local area, I mean even Upper Peninsula that you're gonna hit with an ad in the Miami Journal. You know, if you're gonna be doing something like that, you need to hit major network, major network papers like the News, Free Press, you know, Milwaukee Journal, you know, papers that people read. Your biggest strength is the recreation aspect of it, you know, that's your biggest strength. And that's what I would propose that you would be marketing, is the recreational aspects of living here in Marquette. It's a good destination to be at. So, you know, I think doing direct contacts as much as we can between now and next Tuesday. See what, if any names we can come up with that you might wanna consider or to feed into your decision process as to whether you wanna start another advertising-type campaign for hire a direct, you know, a direct headhunter to go forward, which is gonna cost you about the same. Or see if we can come up with some names between now and then, see if it looks viable at least.
Aren't, can, aren't headhunters about another three-month delay?
Not necessarily, it depends on who they are. If, you know, it's one of the reasons I'm waiting for the return call from the Michigan Municipal because they do recruitment and they've already been involved in vetting quite a few candidates around the state of Michigan for various, usually city positions, but some of them are township individuals, basically, that are looking to move to a bigger community like a city. So they've already, they already have some of those names that we could potentially access for a much smaller fee. So that's, that was why we made that contact last night, we just haven't heard back from you yet.
Can I throw you all a curveball?
Oh, of course.
So the reason I didn't apply for the manager's position was because I was really looking forward to working under Dennis for the length of his term, whatever that may be. Randy's provided me with great input, has given me a lot of liberties over the nine years that I've been here to do manager-like things, but under the auspices of the zoning administration and planning. We've done a lot of projects together and we've made a lot of advances in the community since I started here in 2011 with respect to grants. Sure, there's some technical things that I would need to learn, but I believe that there's also tremendous cost savings if the township was to appoint me as the manager and to have me continue to do zoning administration because you'd effectively only be hiring a half-position instead of replacing a full-time manager with all the bench. I'm a little apprehensive about throwing my hat in the ring, just because I'm younger, but I do believe that I have developed relationships in this community professionally and otherwise that reflect many of the relationships or the duties that Randy holds. And, you know, he came in and told me this morning that Dennis had withdrew again, and I kinda suspected he was gonna do that. If you can't make, you know, the first go-around, I became more apprehensive as that went along. Has my employment here been perfect? No, we've ran into some hiccups here and there, but I think overall, with the scope of work that I've been in charge or tasked with doing and outside of that scope, you know, it's just certainly something to consider and I would need your help as much as he would need my help. But I think that for the sake of continuity in the office, for the sake of continuity in our planning initiatives and things that we're working on, I'm just hard-pressed to find somebody else that may be more qualified than me to take the position. I mean, Dulce has certainly been here a lot longer than me. And, you know, she may be a viable candidate too. But, you know, I think I could have a number of letters of support from developers and people around the community that would support that. In fact, I got a lot of the questions when I didn't apply for the position the first time because when I came to start at the township, obviously it was in my mind, you know, what's next for me? Many planners go on to be city managers, township managers. The only apprehension I have, of course, is that now I'm an at-will employee instead of somebody who's protected by our quasi-administrative union. As far as, you know, working with staff and the day-to-day operations, I think the planner typically has his finger on the pulse of what goes on every day. You know, some of the budgeting stuff, I've been through, you know, considering the city of Ashland in my time at QPAD, 15 years' worth of budget cycles. Capital Improvement Plan is something, obviously, we'd like to see developed more and held on to and fed over time because we're starting to see the equation of our, you know, fire apparatus and things, so. I didn't tell Randy I was gonna come in and spit this at you, it was just something that, you know, you only live once, right? And you only get one crack at it, and all these opportunities, you know, life is so many, so much about choices and things that you put yourself out there to do, and I've never applied for a job that I didn't get. So this would be one of them where I would really question whether or not I could actually gain your support for this position because at 45 years old, you know, maybe I don't have the experience of somebody else, but I live in this community, I work in this community, I believe in the community, and I have a vast network of friends and colleagues in the area that I believe would be supportive of me and help me along during the ride, so. It's just something to think about, you know, I always believed in promotion from within. I, you know, served my country as a Marine, I've served this community honorably, I believe, for almost 10 years. And, I don't know, it's just about, sometimes opportunities present themselves at the least opportune time or what you think is the least opportune time. Yeah, I don't know, it's something I gave it a lot of thought about and I just wanted to make you aware that if you do go out again, I may be applying for it, but I also know that you have the ability to appoint somebody as well. And it could be some bird-dog time for me to work with Randy, you know, time for crossover. You know, I sometimes worry about that whole nepotism thing and the fact that Randy is my stepfather. I don't have any control over that, I didn't have any control over him marrying my mother or him being my boss eventually, that was all other opportunities that came about, so. But I do know that I have a fairly favorable rapport with you all and, you know, I'm not going anywhere. I intend to, you know, fulfill my career here, this is what I love doing, serving the community, being a part of the discussion, having my finger on the pulse of what's new, and I do believe that there's a whole other realm of modernizing a lot of things in the office that hasn't been explored yet, or modernizing how we approach a master plan document or how we approach community involvement, and I think that there's room to improve those things. All the questions that you answered are asked in the interview, I knew all those answers without having to do any research because we've, I've been embedded here for that as long as we've been talking about strategic plans and policy governance and the difference between charter township and common law township, so. It's just a thought, I didn't think that I'd be in this position or speaking in front of you like this, but I don't think I could live with myself if I didn't.
Thank you.
On the strategic plan.
At any event, did you wanna put this on the agenda for the meeting on the 3rd?
The manager discussion?
See what develops between now and then.
Yep, yeah, we'll have to.
Has anybody given any thought to reconsidering Kangas and Misslaw as candidates? They're both qualified.
Well, they're not, the issue that you have is neither one of them meet the minimum requirements of what you advertised.
That's why they were dismissed in the first place.
Well, I guess I would argue that point, but all right.
Well, Misslaw has absolutely no experience in a township charter or otherwise, and John only has two years. Your minimum requirement is three years in a charter township.
Well, both those cases, I said, were equivalent.
Right, but there is nothing outside of a general law township that's equivalent to a charter township. Villages don't count, universities don't count, cities don't count, a totally different structural.
I agree, I agree with you, Randy. I would not wanna consider either of them. Well, we're gonna move on to two or three more months before we get somebody in here. Well, the big question then is, is Randy willing to stay a little longer?
Depends on what a little longer is.
He kinda made a face when I asked him the other day.
Guess we don't know that until we find somebody.
It depends on what a little longer is.
Well, and realistically, we don't even face that yet, you know, see what comes between now and next Tuesday. Jason comments that he just made, we use some things you can chew on. If you want to go back out and advertise again, start the process again, it's gonna be June. Yep, it's gonna be June before you have somebody here, at least, might be later. I already have plans in July and August, June is flexible.
Thank you.
Might as well ask this while we're in the setting, and Jason, if you'd got the manager's job, I would prefer that you just do that, and if that were the case, what happens to planning?
It's a good question, Ryan's good, he's not Isaac good, but he's good. And, you know, I believe that he could be taught what needs to be taught, and he's willing to learn, and I had a brief conversation with him this morning as well, given the circumstances. And, you know, I believe between the two of us, we could administer planning and zoning through my help with him, knowing that my primary role would be working as the manager, but...
Do you think he's qualified enough to take on Marquette Township's planning and zoning?
Not if you were to advertise, no.
Yeah.
But if you were to move him into a position.
If we were Chalkaway maybe, or Nagani Township, or, you know, I could see bringing somebody up who's relatively new. I'm chewing on this while I'm saying it too.
Your other option could be, there, I'm pushing buttons.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Other option could be to separate planning and zoning, again, like it was before and have a planner hand a zoner underneath, I mean, if you were to go in that direction.
Well, my ultimate goal would be a cost savings to the township, that's my incentive to you. I mean, I have a unique skill set, I believe, and, you know, I don't see Ryan looking at documents and saying, "Hey, Jason, I need your signature on this, can you review this for me?" as being a major issue to continue to be the zoning administrator, maybe for a time, I don't know, but...
In as much as this is turning into a quasi-interviews, I would object to that discussion.
I know, but I had to ask a question.
The same way that I would object to the same discussion about with John Kangas, you can't consider his value in his current position as a reason not to put him in a different one. And, so if this is actually an interview, I object to the question.
No, but...
Let's move on to planning. Yeah, well, I guess let me clarify what my comments were previously, and, you know, basically, it's not pigeonholing anybody in a given position, but your compensation level is predicated upon the point factor structure tied to your job description. And that has a minimum requirement of three years' experience in a charter township, you know, going forward, and that's, if you deviate from that, you change the wage structure, you change the compensation structure, and that was the issue, John has two years, total, two years. He does not meet the three-year threshold, he's got one-year Chalkaway Township and I give him credit for the two times, three times that he was the interim manager in Fisherman. That takes him to two years, basically. So, I mean, that's the format that I'm coming from, if I would've been evaluating all of those candidates on the matrix that you had, only one of them would've been called for an interview. And that would've been Dennis. None of the others met the criteria, DNR did not meet the criteria, Jennifer did not, and John did not. The criteria that you advertise and that you based your salary compensation on. That's how I come at it technically. You know, Jason, and some of you may not have known that Jason is my stepson, I had absolutely nothing to do with his hire.
That's true.
When he, when he decided, in Ashland, when he decided to apply for the job, I handed it off to the supervisor and the planning director and yet I had nothing more to do with it.
And let it be known that Randy and I have two very different philosophies.
Well, I think we know that.
Well, you've probably seen that in terms of planning and zoning, you know, but I just wanted to be clear there because I am stickler for an apetism. It does not happen, so that occurred, that was how that was handled. In fact, totally away from it, I had nothing to do with it if he was gonna continue to be considered as a candidate. And that was a decision that Alan Sargent and Dennis made, so. But I mean, but that's how I come at it, because that's the only way you can defend your decision and these kinds of decisions is to have factual backup. I guarantee you that if one of the others had been offered the position, you would've been liable because there would've been other folks out there that did not apply because they didn't meet that criteria, including some of your staff members, second as you're hearing right now, you know, but that's why you have to be exceedingly careful in those recruitment processes. And not really deviate from what your minimums are, is what you have to live with.
We'll see what Tuesday brings.
Go ahead, Randy.
I think we're getting way off, as Dave said, we're here for strategic planning. Fine, what we're talking about is fine, but I think we have to move forward and go out and make a decision on Tuesday which direction we're gonna go.
Yep.
And get the information to us, we have to digest it, make a decision, and move forward, and that. As of right now, I think we need to move forward on a strategic plan and that. The information we got, we can grind on it and see what we got, and go forward.
And we may come up with nothing between now and Tuesday. And we may come up with nothing between now and Tuesday.
Then that's another back question.
Yeah, yeah. We just don't know. On Tuesday, basically, your decision Tuesday is going to be what process are you going to follow? Are you going to do some targeting interviewing or are you going to open it back up again?
Okay.
Last, you know, I mean, we kind of thrust on this late yesterday afternoon, so it's still kind of.
Well, that's why we needed to air it out a little bit.
I think it's.
That's half hour. That's good enough. I was hoping for 20 minutes, but there are emotional issues involved with this on everybody's side. You want to, you want to drive?
Well, I just, I mean, to start out, what I did was, I took it by myself and I, you guys do what you want with it, is I took that.
I appreciate it. You had the time.
I took that strategic plan and work session, and I took, we had a whole bunch of goals in there, and like 41. And we had all the strategic plan or the SWOT analysis stuff in there. And I thought that what we're concentrating on was those two items. I went through and based on Supervisor Durant's mom things that she does.
I like Supervisor idea more than Mom.
She went and checked over all my typos.
She's good at that.
I cleaned that part of it up.
That's the newspaper editor in me.
And the parts that are before that. And I just put together a draft of what we had for 2013. And I just made some changes accordingly. I put the typos and the corrections in this front part here. And I thought what we were going to concentrate on today was the SWOT analysis.
We even have transitions.
Pretty nice.
I, you know, like I said, I had a little time screwing around. So, if you want to start with the SWOT analysis, that's what I come up with based on the input that I got. Some of them were duplications, so I went through and weeded it out and then to see if I come up with the same wording that was the same as what everybody else was putting in there. And that's what I come up with. So, if you want to change it, you want to scrap it, whatever you want to do, there it is.
Did, go ahead, John.
I approve everything that's been said. But I think one way that we could proceed, and one way we should proceed, is to have each board member who's had a long look at this stuff for a long time, to indicate what they think is the top issue that we need to give priority to. If we had that by each board member to get started, it'll, it'll help us evolve through some of them that are tied to each other. What I mean by that is some of the issues that are there, whether we need to get property, whether we need to have a new center for our residents, or whether we, some of them are tied together in such a way that if we were just to express what we think the primary top issue is in our mind, I'd like to see whether there's any consensus.
Would you like to flip over?
To give you an example of that, my personal feeling is we need room to expand and room to store. That's, that, if you're talking about what is the primary need for this township, it's not recreation sites, it's not a whole, in my mind anyway, it's not a lot of other things. The primary thing that we have that we're faced with is we don't have enough space for employees, we don't have enough space to expand, and we need, if you're talking about that, you have to say, we have to require property and we have to plan for a new facility. Either it's a total new facility for the township board and the township hall, or whether it's just a new facility for the community center. Either one of those would address the growth problem that we need to address. And in my mind, that becomes a highlight of what we need to talk about in general before we go off on all these tangents about other things that are nice to have.
Well, page two of that goal, there's what you addressed there. One is increase the township facility office and storage space with, and I just put, when I put the responsibility in there and the target date, that would just throw itself out there that made sense. And I put a target date of 2021 on the increasing the facility and storage space. And then right below that was what everybody else is concerned about is the handicap access.
You think everybody's concerned about that?
Yes.
Yes.
Be in a position one time, and you'll find real quick what it's all about.
Well, I know the manager has given us some overall costs on that, but I, I'm not sure exactly what that included, but you could pare that down to handicap access one door on the double door system. So, you could do a lot of that stuff to get the price down. Because it seems to me it was $20,000, if I remember.
Yeah, it's high because of the number of doors that would have to be done to meet a handicap accessibility. It's not just the outside door, it'd be the interior doors as well.
And it isn't even the handicap side of it. Andrew's heard me 100 times when I come in with my bag and briefcase and coat and, you know, drink, and there's 1,000 doors to get in here. So, it isn't even handicap. If somebody's carrying something in, they can't even get in. But the concern Andrew has is the security of her area. If somebody strange is going to come in, or she doesn't know what kind of moods they're coming in, she's kind of exposed there. So, she was talking about keeping some of those doors less accessible, even the one coming into the.
Well, I think that was in here, controlled access to the general office, which just means they're going to pause them in.
Yeah, something like that.
As opposed to just walking in the door.
Or at least have a push button out here.
That's a fairly simple fix. I mean, it's not a real big cost item.
You know, there are the, I mean, the city did, I was looking at it the other day, when the city did their renovation inside City Hall, their new renovation, they have units that are above the door. Granted, they have different doors than what we have, but they have, they're mechanical units above the door that operates the door itself, and they're remotely controlled. They've got an antenna on the top of them, so when you push an outside transmitter, it operates the door. So, that was a company out of Dollar Bay, I think it was. So, I made contact with them to see what it would take to do that here. Obviously, some modification, there'd have to be some changes to the, to the door structures and openers, those kinds of things, but I don't know that it would be 20,000. I don't know yet.
Yeah, the only thing you have to change on that is you have to change the closure on top, it becomes an automatic.
But it has to be mounted above the door somehow, the units that they had, and it would be, you know, you'd have to get into the wall probably on some of these interior doors, if you're going to do those tracks.
Yeah, you have to get electronics.
Well, I mean, it's doable. Security is a bigger issue, however, with the drywall structure that we have.
But anyway, John's, your concern or your, what you perceive as being first and foremost, it's on that goal, it's with the 2021 target date, so.
But what I'm getting at is maybe we could establish what the seven board members have in mind as a top priority. Then you can go on to the other four.
Other four. I mean, for goals?
There's about 12 here.
Yeah, and I figured those were going to get pared down.
If we're going to pare it down to five.
The way I did the goals is I just combined all of them that could be combined that were duplicates, and then just put them in some kind of a wording that covered everybody's concerns. And I just put them on there. I know there's a lot on there, there's 10 or 12 anyway.
So, why don't we start there? Does everybody agree with the ones that are on here? You have a problem with it? Do you want to eliminate them or add them? The only one I saw that wasn't on here or didn't see was to do something with the Starbucks road and that, the lot and everything. Get tired of going back there to the holes and we even need to, you know, we did it as an access road, and we're not keeping it up, so.
So, that would be.
I think it should be something to address. Either we get rid of it or.
Improve the township property on County Road 492.
Do something, yeah. It's like our same argument about Masons or Morgan Meadows and the wells and, you know, we have stuff sitting that we're not doing anything with. There's no plan, there's no long-range goal, or yes, we are going to do phase two, or yes, we're going to sell that lot. The whiskey guy was, we were excited about that.
Me too.
And be able to do that. Mahaney had us all hyped up about developing it and moving the road and, you know, we're just, if it's not important, then I guess we are, we forget about it. Sell it, you know?
Yeah, that's.
Do something.
I agree with.
Here, get off the pot, you know? We have assets we can use, we need money.
Well, I think the least we should do is at least advertise it for sale.
Well, we said we didn't want to sell it, but we said at one point we didn't want to sell it. We were going to keep it.
Sell what now?
The land next to the Starbucks road, what I call the Starbucks road.
Oh, okay.
It's just full of holes.
Well, the problem that's been brought up on that is that that road is a private road right now. That road runs through a piece of property that if you were to update it and pave it or whatever, you'd have a paved road through property and you'd lower the value of the property.
I don't think it actually meets road standards as a private driver.
No, yeah, it's a private.
It could remain a commercial drive, and whoever the owner is, the memorandum of understanding or the purchase agreement could stipulate that the buyer of that property shall maintain and upgrade that.
Just to play devil's advocate for a minute, isn't there a ordinance that says that there's more than one commercial property that, is it three commercial properties that have access to a private drive that it has to be come a public road?
Yes, and it would only be two.
Two properties?
Abutting parcels. Maybe three, but pure one.
Yeah.
I mean, ideally, functionally, the best thing to do is to have it as a commercial driveway that's maintained. Some people know it's there, some people don't. But it also provides an ideal access to whoever buys the property. And I don't really believe in townships being landlords or real estate agents, you know? If you come across something and you want to control the zoning of it or what happens to it, that's great, but you also need to, in my view, liquidate that property for what it's worth and get that money back into this.
Put it on the tax roll.
But the road wasn't part of that.
I agree with what you're saying, but right now it's access to two commercial operations. And if you make that part of, if it becomes access to the property that we sell that's on the other side of it, now it's access to three commercial operations.
Well, you can request a variance then.
Or you can just eliminate.
Do you know anybody on the zoning committee?
Or you can just eliminate it. It's a private drive on your property.
But right now, we could do it in spring, snowboulds, get a, hold a damn I-beam down up and down to smooth it out and say if you didn't want to spend any money on it. Just have our public works take it and hook it onto the driveway.
They'd have to do it multiple times.
They got a buckle for that. I have, I have a piece of equipment on the back of my tractor that would take care of that in an afternoon forever.
There, a saddle right there, it would take care of it.
But it's not going to stay.
Yes, it will.
All those potholes are going to go away and never come back.
Yeah, you got to, I do the same with my dirt driveway.
The problem is, is they are not taken care of on a regular basis. They have to be taken care of every spring when the ground breaks up.
Well, you just said it would be taken care of forever. You still have to maintain it.
It would never get that bad, as bad as it is. The bad problem with it is, is it's never been fixed in the spring. And again, I've got a piece of equipment and hooks on the back of my tractor that would take care of that in the afternoon.
So, we could have it a gravel road and be an access road and leave it that way if we want to, very easily, right? Is what you're saying.
Yeah, I'm saying that have it an access as a gravel road wouldn't, would be acceptable if it was drivable.
Right. That's my objection.
Then nobody'd care if it was gravel or not.
When Mahaney come up with that project over there, that road wasn't there.
I was thinking about that.
He wasn't.
Yeah, it was. Yeah, and he was going to move it. No, he was going to move it the other direction.
That's what I'm trying to get at. So, it might not be part of.
Because we said, it was part of the agreement. We said the road has to stay. And he said, well, can I move it? And we said, sure. He was going to have it come out on 492.
Right.
So, that's fine.
His driveway was, was south of where he wanted there, and he came in and went through the park.
So, how much does that really get used? Should we put a counter out there for a month and see?
I think if.
I bet you it's not used very much.
If it were fixed, people would use it.
So, the benefit that you have at the board level with the property is that there's nothing really firm on, there's no easement that's been declared, reciprocating to their properties. It's just a piece of property with a driveway on it. So, you know, you market that as just a five-acre piece, and there's no, you really don't have any obligation other than in your mind to keep up with it because of what has happened to it.
Well, because we had talked, and one of the items on here is the lack of off roads on, off of 41.
Rear access.
So, that was one of the reasons, I think, we originally said, hey, well, we got a chance to do this, it's our property, let's put a road through. And it was because of Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Black Friday, people were trapped in there. There was no way to get out.
Dave, I just sent you the Ariel.
That was, that was the issue. That road was put in to resolve a Black Friday traffic issue.
And that was serious.
For people that were shopping that well. You've got the pure one's going to close.
Yeah.
You got, I mean, you know, so who's going to be using it? Is that still a priority for you to have that rear access for Goodwill?
Michael's.
Michael's.
And the shop next to Goodwill.
Again, Michael's isn't what the problem is.
Well, you know, we got a solution to it. Dave said he got a piece of, hire Dave to go up there.
Hey, we just bought a brand-new tractor. Come on.
I said, the piece of equipment is not that expensive.
You didn't say that.
What's your hourly rate?
Well, anyway, we got it.
In the two weeks, we'll have a loader.
Exactly.
In the two weeks. And, you know, the building and grounds guys have been doing that with the plow. They've been using backblading with the plow to pull stuff back into the holes. Problem is, is people come in there 35, 40 miles an hour and spinning the tires, and it's a gravel road. And as long as it is, it's going to have holes.
All due respect, a plow won't work. I'd be happy, a one-time only deal, a spring to show you how good that can be.
Yeah, well, he said that.
With a loader, you'll be able to maintain.
Moving right along.
Be able to maintain with a loader. But is that really what you want on your strategic plan, is that damn driveway? I mean, that's not going to solve any problem for you going forward.
No, but it's the lot, it's the hole.
Yeah, the property.
Well, and the property's been marketed, what, eight times in the last five years?
Well, you got to come down on your price a little bit.
Maybe, maybe a different Realtor.
No.
There you go.
Realtor, you got, you ended up paying money to have the lot. You paid your Realtor to have the lot, and he was going to take a piece of the commission. If you want to sell the property, let staff sell it. We can market it as well as anybody else can by putting an ad in the paper.
I don't know why we decided not to sell it.
The board decided not to.
I know.
The board decided to quit the side process until further notice, and it hasn't come back since.
What did I agenda for Tuesday?
Well, no, it can still just be.
Disposition of township by a pure parcel.
Just do it. If you think you can move it, do it.
That's just one of the items, anyway. On the, on the goal statements, it was one that, that I felt was not.
Took a long time to get through that.
Well, the other alternative, quite frankly, is don't sell it and turn it into Parish One Wood Park. Five more acres to the park.
We can't seem to decide. Are there any of these strategic actions that we feel shouldn't be on here? Can we pare this down? Are any of them not as important? Do they not belong here? Do we have them almost solved? Do, can we have any control over it?
Street lighting could go right into the road committee and they can decide what they want with that. You take it off the plan. Because we have an ordinance for what we're supposed to be following, so really you could take it out of here and just put it through the road committee.
Street lighting in there?
Right here.
I don't see it either. I don't see it either.
Oh, you're on the wrong page. You're on the wrong thing.
Could be John.
You're on the draft thing I'm saying.
The one that's up on the screen? Has he got the twentieth, um, version, Dave? Can you tell?
He has only one version of that.
I don't think he's got the right.
Here.
You need that one, Mike.
No, I got it.
Do you have one that's up on the screen?
I'm looking for it. Where is on this?
Yeah, I think he's got the older one.
Yeah, I got it. Right here.
So, like, the first one on here talking about County Road 550 access. I, personally, I think that that would be a great thing to do, just avoid 550. But how much control do we have over that, especially in the next five years?
Which one is that, though?
The first one.
I, I don't think we have any control over it.
It seems like kind of a pie in the sky. This is not something we can work on in my mind. I mean, correct me, Jason, you know, the logistics better than I. That we can work on and accomplish in the next five or ten years. That would help the township. Well, it'd help? I think so. I think it'd help. I've been saying this for years. I agreed as soon as I heard about it. I think it's a great idea. But I don't know that that should, can be...
There's already a plan for that.
Well, it's been forever.
Well, the road commission has. That was one of the truck routes that the road commission identified.
Well, and there's a road on the road facilities plan, or whatever you wanna call it, transportation plan now, that kind of goes up that way and it was put on there on purpose. It's just kind of a, like a dead road on the map. And that kind of was the intent, but it doesn't go anywhere. It's not finished, you know?
Yeah, there was pushback from the residents of Huron Woods. I was under the impression that the, the permit to cross Campo Creek that Crimmins held expired as well. And that was another factor. The saving grace on that particular, or removing that particular item from the strategic plan is that it's in the recreation, or it's in the transportation plan. So, it's still a part of the master plan should it come to fruition. Our documents show that we support it, but as far as something that is within the next five years, I don't know.
Well, your action on that would be to ask the road commission to pursue it. They have a plan.
And they'll say they don't have any money and then that'll be it.
I'd be into that, huh?
Well, you know, unless, unless there's other funding sources. But I guess from a strategic planning standpoint, the plan already exists. The question is executing.
Okay, so I mark that one to be removed.
Unless the board feels that this is something...
The board take a formal action.
But if we're talking something we can do in the next five years, it'll probably not happen.
Yeah.
Tangible items.
Yeah, something we can sink our teeth into. Remember Dennis's chart behind us? You know, what can we put up there that we could tick off?
No.
Something we can accomplish, like the road thing. I mean, that, that was an awesome project. And that's what the public wanted. So, if we can pare this down and present it to the public, unless they come up with something different, say absolutely, we want this, this, this. The master plan's being worked on. If there's something that we feel is missing when we get the draft and we can look at it, put it in and recommend it to planning or work on it. I don't think this is, this is not a thing either for strategic action in my mind.
Well, that would be more of a public works CIP, right?
Yeah.
Instead of what... I mean, our master plan talks about public works, but it doesn't go into what public works should be doing over the next twenty-five years.
Right. Well, isn't John working on that?
Yeah.
I thought that's what he said.
Yep.
He's trying to get it organized.
On his end, yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't think that's something we can do anything with.
Is that the master plan?
Public Works' master plan for the next twenty-five years.
That is driven by the state. That's not driven by John and public works.
Well, no, but John's getting it organized. He's, he said he was working on it with the asset management plan and everything.
Well, the asset management plan is different than the master plan.
I know that.
Master plan is for the water system and for the wastewater system. And that is driven by the state predicated upon where growth is anticipated over the next twenty-five years. It's by agreement with the state to acquire funding to help do that. So, you know, that's the twenty-five-year master plan we're in now. The state gave us the money to implement the twenty-five-year master plan and that's why we're obligated to do what's in that plan. Both for water and for sewer. It's in compliance with a contract with the state.
And part of the discussion, too, needs to include, and we talked about this before, where is, where do we feel the development's gonna be? What do we want to focus on? Which ties into the second phase of the well project.
And where we have impact on that master plan is how we're going to accomplish what's given in that asset management plan.
So, it's not amendable?
A lot of approval by the state.
Well, but it is amendable.
Well, assuming the state allows you to amend it. You're, you're in a contract, a twenty-five-year contract with the state. So, I don't know if that, if that master plan has an amendment clause in it. I mean, that'd be a question that John can research.
When is, when is the twenty-fifth year? When did it start? Is it renewable?
Two thousand and four?
Where, yeah, it was last looked at, I think, was two thousand and four, two thousand and five was the last update. And that's when we added our water system.
So, it's already fifty years old?
Yeah, yeah. And that was amended when we, when we added our municipal water system.
So, do we have a feeling as a township that we need to explore the Forestville north side for development? Do we wanna go up 492? You know, do we, that would be our input. And that's just a discussion. It's not anything about amending the plan. It's just, do we want to take some kind of position and say, "Okay, we want to focus on the next five to ten years of developing everything north of us." And maybe that'll include the Forestville Road and everything. You know, if that's something we want to tackle, that's fine. We can add it on here. If we want to do the 492, if we want to do something with our acreage south and, and do the whole park and everything like Dennis wanted to do. So, this, this is what we have to start, you know, this is where I'm trying to pare it down. If we don't have direction and we don't want to deal with that right now, then this is another one that comes off.
Of course, it'll be easy to market County Road Commission, worse than us.
But if it's something we want to pursue...
We can always tell them what our interests are.
Yeah, do a formal letter and, and tell them to work with them on grants and try to get some easements if we've got something that's expired.
If they're, if they're willing to do something, you could always put amend your five-year plan and then put it in there that way.
So, Forestville development of what, future residential?
Road.
Yeah, infrastructure.
Five fifty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I mean, we could do the whole thing if we think that's important. You know, if there'd been more planning, everybody says this on 41, we wouldn't have the, all the issues that we do have. So, we've got a couple, we've got three areas that we can look at. Do we want to help figure this out? Do we want to have the planning commission look at a direction? Do we want to say, "Okay, let's go north." We want to develop this, we want to make sure the trails are in, we want roads, we want to put our infrastructure in there. Include that in the twenty-five-year plan? You know, if we don't, that's fine. Leave it for the next couple boards. Randy, go ahead.
I think you have a more basic question to answer. Number one is not throw all these things at the planning commission. You have to give the planning commission the direction.
Yeah, I'm trying to get these guys to think beyond right here.
Well, I, I guess the first thing, from my standpoint, the first thing I think the board needs to be doing is looking internally. What is it that you need to do to the township operation to be able to meet the requirements that you're gonna be looking at in the next twenty to twenty-five years? Number one is space.
Right, that's already on here.
And if number one is space, you have to find out where are you gonna have the ability to have space? So, if it's anywhere in the central area between Troll Bridge and the developing district, you're running out of land. Your first objective should be to acquire some place for you to be, to be able to supply the services you're talking about. If you're talking about developing the Forestville area, you're gonna have to extend utilities to make it happen. Nobody's gonna buy property up there if you don't have services to develop. The developer's not gonna pay.
They shall pay.
To put it in. Well, they should pay when they connect, but they're not gonna pay to build it. That's why your master plan is in place to get money from the state to extend those to be paid back through utilities.
Right.
That's how it works.
But if we're trying to figure out what of these items are important, or if there are other ones, we need to pare this down. And in order to do that, we have to decide what our focus is gonna be. If the board says, "No, no, no, wait a minute. We don't want to worry about going to Forestville, looking at the south trails. We don't want to do that. Let's just look at the building," then we've pared this down. That's all I'm trying to do, is get this list smaller.
And if you decide that your future is in the Forestville area, then you hand that to the planning commission and say, "We want this to be our residential development area, drafted. Make it happen."
That's what I said.
But it's not throw it to the planning commission and say, "You consider Forestville and bring us back a recommendation." It's do it.
I'm trying to be general. I'm trying to be general and have everybody think about...
But you also don't want to get bogged down with fifteen or twenty items that you're looking at for the next five to ten years.
Which is why I'm trying to pare these down.
Where's the growth, local growth farm over here? I don't, I put it on, I don't know if anyone else did. But talk to Realtors, I mean, like Swick and Overstar and see if they'd be interested in buying that. You know, and then develop it into residential areas.
They're trying.
Otter Barrows Farm?
Right up the hill here, the forty.
On Vandaboo.
Yeah. What farm?
Vandaboo.
Otter Barrows. Give me Otter Barrows, please.
I'm talking about the forty that's right up the hill here on Venture. That's prime real estate and they want a pretty penny for it, but...
They want a huge penny.
We've got the seventy acres north of, for commercial development. We've got utilities in place, we're zoned properly for seventy acres of development north of Meyer.
Up the sky.
We are zoned properly and have utilities to this forty acres right here, including the approximately ten and fifteen that are self of Venture. Residentially, we have utilities up to Huron Woods in, along Forestville. And if a developer wanted, we've already rezoned all that because we know Longyear is gonna divest themselves of a lot of property up that way. So, knowing that, we rezoned that property for high-end residential a number of years ago. And if a developer wants to develop that property, they shall extend the main, one main hole past the driveway, just like they did at Huron Woods.
For a large-scale development.
Yeah, for subdivision types.
Right.
Go ahead, John.
But again, you're talking large, you're talking upscale development, not the mid-level development is what we need.
What we do need.
For the next five years, we're, we have plenty of commercially developable property. It's just a matter of getting the right fix. And then the other thing we need to talk about, and what I'll probably talk about in my interview with TV Six tomorrow when they ask me about Discount Tire, is the changing landscape of retail. It's, it's changing so rapidly that, you know, I was reading an article the other day that talked about flexible zoning to repurpose properties that are underperforming. And I think that's something we should definitely look at because, you know, it's not gonna be the one box fits all anymore. We should be looking at research and development. I've talked to the planning commission about this. High-tech industry, light, light industrial, things of that nature that are more sustainable than a twenty-year box store.
How about if we do this?
Okay.
How about if on that first page, you take off the improved, young-developed right-ofways? We're talking about the right-ofways in Troll Bridge. And we take off right below that, the incorporate grounds maintenance partners into public works. You get rid of those two on that page. On the next page, you leave on the first two, you leave on the first three. The rest of those are all something that's workable with minimal effort.
Mm-hmm. Some of them are just the direct staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, John's been waiting.
The only point I wanted to make, I wanted to jump in when we were talking about Forestville, Wright Street and that area. That's all subject to some improvements that are going to, supposedly gonna take place this spring. The intersection of Forestville and Wright Street will have to be addressed. And adding another entrance into Forestville is part of that, I would assume, by the road commission because there's a hillside on both sides and it is an extremely difficult place to, to plant a roundabout or whatever they're thinking about at the intersection of Forestville and Wright Street. So, whatever they're going to do will be a big benefit to the people that you're trying to get to think about, the development in that area. I agree with the thought that our best investment for the money is to extend the sewer and water from the intersection of Huron Drive north. If you ever wanted to do, wanted to encourage anybody to put in a residential property and build it, and that's the one we make the most money on, that, that's the smallest investment that could be made to get the most return. It just is because it's, it's, you could take it for a mile and do wonders with development. But I think even that has to wait till they get through this spring with their planning for how they're gonna treat ingress and egress from Wright Street from Forestville. You gotta wait till they tell us what the hell they're gonna do there. And I, and I think it's unfair to, you can't just throw it to the planning commission. That's not fair. And I don't think we have enough knowledge about that to get started. It's a great area to make the most return for our investment, whether it's our investment or encouraging the state to help us that way. But what's gonna happen this spring?
I think they're just gonna tee it off, would be my guess. I think they're just gonna tee it off.
Last, the last word that we had was that they were just gonna try and square that intersection up a little more so it's not such an angle.
They've only got the hundred fifty thousand dollars they took from us, basically.
To plan.
Yeah. I don't think they're gonna put a whole lot of money into it, would be my guess.
That's, the last I heard from, from their, not their engineer, but from their superintendent was that they were utilizing that to develop the plan to make that intersection better usable. And it's basically squaring it up.
Yeah.
Whatever that means, right?
More of a ninety-degree intersection as opposed to the forty-five degree or thirty-degree angle that it is now.
When are they resurfacing Wright Street? Is that this twenty-one on the one or twenty-two?
I think they're doing part of it.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one.
It's two phases, I think.
Yeah.
Randy, you had your hand up.
Going back to what Jason was saying about the property over here. You have to look who owns it. Ed Scott's daughter. She, she's just as bad as her dad.
No, that's worse.
I know a cornerstone has been trying to buy it for a long time and they just can't come to a reasonable price at all.
Last I heard was two million to four million dollars for that forty acres.
Was it four point one? What did they have at the corner?
Four point one?
Either way, it's two million, too many.
Yes.
But sooner or later, they're gonna want to sell. In fact, if Fish and Wildlife goes up on the corner, I got a call because they need more property from the Scots. Jim Ross is my guy. I've known Jim Ross since college, so that's Ed Scott's daughter's husband, Jim is. And that's who I talked to. So, they're gonna be purchasing a sliver of property, actually, it's gonna be a boundary adjustment from Scott to Fish and Wildlife via Chuck, Tom and Fred to create the depth that that property needs in order to, for them to move there. There, there is some movement happening and I've been in conversation with them. They would like to find, you know, one or two big users that'll come in and, and do a nice job on the property. So, I think Fred and Tom and Chuck are starting to have a good rapport on the commercial side, which is fun because they're, they're good to work with and they're local. So, you never know. They're pretty aggressive. If they can figure out a way to get that property, I know that they really want it.
Talking, talking to Fred, he says, "We can't afford to, to do that because we're not gonna make any money on it at the price that they want it right now."
Make money on it. Make money on it, like any other development, yeah?
And at thirty-eight and a half acres, they only have six land divisions coming to them, so they have to, you know, use those wisely.
Jason, what about the property north of the gas station? Meyer's gas station? That's why, that strip along the road going out north?
So yeah, that's a commercial driveway now touching, or access to two properties. You know, that was where that road was gonna come out, right? To feed into the roundabouts.
Right.
It's still, under, my understanding is still a commercial drive.
It is. It's, well, it's, it's a commercial drive to the intersection of Brickyard, and then it's private drive north of that.
Correct.
But could they turn that into business? Something about the power lines, too. You can't build too close underneath the power lines or something. Is there something about that?
Yeah, it's, well, it's undesirable for one, but.
And they have a right of way besides.
Doesn't that butt up to Kathy Peters' protected property, too?
No, I heard it's further west than that.
Yeah, the biggest issue with it, north of Brickyard Road is the owner.
Yeah.
The planning commission in their master plan in the future zoning made that development district.
Future land use shows, yeah, development district and commercial south of Brickyard.
Right, along the highway.
Development district north to create that buffer between residential.
And there's a piece just further west of that that is potentially developable as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, you have everything along Brickyard to the south, which is currently zoned development district. That's probably another forty to fifty acres. So there's, I mean, there's over a hundred acres in the township within a quarter mile off of the highway that's ready to go for commercial development. You can't do much better than that. My concern is infill for old retail spaces which are now laying dormant, i.e. the mall, i.e. Gator Mountain.
Soon to be.
Soon to be, a couple others, so it, it's being creative with repurposing those properties to allow for other uses to come in that we might not even be, A, aware of, or B, that we're not set up for zoning that may work in that direction. Especially if it's contained within indoors. Such as marijuana dispensaries or grow operations. You know, the city's not even putting a, a limit on their licenses, right? So they're gonna let the market decide what, what bears. But, you know, Northern, I've talked to the planning commission about this, too, that Northern Michigan University owns some property in the township, just up by the Blue Heron Bluffs area. You know, who knows if we were able to create some synergy with Northern to, you know, have them build a research center in the township that, you know, feeds that, that major that they're having, that they offer, you know, for, for research and development. Those are the things, like, in my view, that's the future of the community, is having, being open to entrepreneurship and the new, even a term that Mike Springer uses, the new economy. Because I meet a lot of people now who are just, they moved here and they're, they work for a tech company or something, and they just work from home. And just more sustainable types of land uses such as research and development and, and light industry. More organics, more people that are, that are making things. That should be sustainable in the long term, more so than some of these retail. I mean, how much retail can you have in our community, you know? We've got, we've got Target, Walmart, and Meyer. That's insane.
Target going forward used to be that mid-level residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, light, light industry, like you said.
Well, even when my kids were, got married, they had to move out of the whole close area, go to Scandia. They couldn't afford it.
Yeah.
You know, Trailbridge is two fifty. You need some one eighty-fives or one fifties.
My brother, on my dad's side, just bought a house in Trailbridge for a hundred and seventy, so.
Yeah.
They're out there. And they certainly get bought up really quick, so, yeah, that should be another, in my view, if you follow the community survey to a T and you're responding to those suggestions or things that the community members are telling you, then you're never gonna go wrong as a board member or as a local government. And two, you have to be able to see a little bit beyond what the layman resident sees, too. And that's that median housing market, which is really slim right now, and you wanna have housing for all stages of life, right? So, you know, whether you, whether you purchase property and control the zoning on that or what have you, but to incentivize somehow creation of housing that is for, you know, that median income, and whether that's through tax abatement or.
Well, we did it with the set-aside land. That's some of Blue Heron.
Yeah.
You know, do you take your forty?
Conservation district, yeah.
Make a little bit smaller and save some land.
Yeah, and we do a lot more land divisions that way. So I don't know if we need to promote that more or, or make that more readily available, but, you know, we do have a great ordinance.
Eastern Nagani and Ishkman Township are right now the targets for that median housing.
Yeah, people are moving out to that.
They built a whole slew of brand-new houses on the east side of the city of Nagani that are very reasonably priced. And we're seeing a lot of younger families moving that way. Same thing with West Ishkman, you know, behind Westwood, around the Westwood School area. Lot of, lot of young families are moving that way. Just for the reduced cost, it's cheaper for them to drive from there to here than it is to live there.
And if they're moving back to the area from a bigger market, they're already accustomed to making that drive, and maybe even a longer drive.
Yeah.
Than it would take, you know what I mean, if you were in Chicago or something and you're forty-five minutes out?
Thirty-five miles to a mile.
Yeah. I think you have, as Jason said, you know, the seventy acres you around that, that Up the Sky has been dealing with. If they don't ever develop and that comes back on the market, there'd be an ideal location for a subdivision along those lines. I mean, for, you know, mid-level housing, access to off of Wright Street. There's, right next to Legacy Hills, which is, you know, the Feltow property up on four ninety-two, right next, so that's a hundred and twenty-seven acres. It would be ideal for that kind of residential development, if they had access to water. You know, those kinds of things are, they're out there. They're sitting out there, and, you know, those are, those are opportunities for the future.
And maybe that's for the next board to really sink their teeth into and look at their five to ten years. It could be the same board, who knows? But if you look at the survey, the low tax rate is number one, managing future growth is number two on two of the pages. They want overall quality of township facilities. We've already done the improved safety efforts by the police and fire protection, maintenance in parks. They're all, we've done it, you know, or we're working on it. Number four is highway commercial district appearance.
That's something that you could have a potential impact on with the DDA and.
Yeah, we're gonna be busy with the corridor this next year. So. So let's go back to this real quickly so we can pare it down. Do we agree that the county road five fifty could be taken off of here?
Yes.
And the public works master amendment?
Yes.
And I don't know about the non-motorized. That kind of falls into whatever's happening. I don't know that we can tackle this to have it ticked off the list.
The biggest thing on Fair Avenue there is because there just isn't room. When you look on Fair Avenue, especially where I live, with that. Or to put a non-motorized one.
Yeah, and Brooklyn Road.
There just isn't anything there.
Non-motorized, just a sidewalk, right?
Yeah.
Even a sidewalk.
Oh, there's one there. They got right away thirty feet.
Or widen shoulder. They, the city did a road diet on the east end of East Fair, West Fair. And they just shrunk the drivelanes and put a painted bike lane in.
Yeah, there's a painted lane on the, on the.
It's possible.
West side, the west side of Fair, there's a bike lane painted, you know, straight for, for a pathway.
That's true.
On the west side.
You have to go on the south side. But then you've got the two culvert, big culverts there that you have to worry about.
Straight crossing?
How you get across those and that, too.
But is it something we wanna look at or something we wanna scratch?
I was just gonna say, do we want to, we've got multiple road issues here. Do we want to talk to the road commission? Do we wanna put this down and talk to the road committee and say, "Okay, these are our issues. What do we have to do to get these done? What do we have to do to improvement, or improve them? What can we do? Do we wanna have road, whatever, maintenance upkeep discussion with the road commission? And make that one of our items to focus on the next five years and see if we can.
I would say.
We've got the millage, you know.
Fair Avenue, because if it came from the recreational, we've been talking about bikeable, walkable area. You know, Wright Street's dangerous. Fair Avenue is bad, too, but I mean, if we could get another access to walkable, bikeable, that would be easier, 'cause the city on the other side already did it.
So we could, we could have one of our items, maybe it isn't these roads, maybe there's more. We could have one of our items be to do some, something with the roads, okay? Whether it's sidewalks or widening or bike paths or whatever.
Your primary issue on the township side on Fair Avenue is gonna be that you don't have the width. You know, you're talking about major.
You're looking at things through a microscope, broad-brush approach, right? Over the next five years, we will look at improving non-motorized transportation along local roads and market township. And then underneath that, you say, "Work with road committee. Work with road commission. Look for grants." Instead of having like very finite.
That's the big thing that drives that, is the grant availability.
Yeah.
The township's already going forward to do it on their diet.
Right.
But, you know, the other thing is, you know, along those lines on the city side, when they did that road diet, they already had flattened subdivisions. I mean, you add it, and when you get, when you get to the township line, there's a dramatic change in the topography.
Yeah.
In terms of, in terms of being able to widen Fair Avenue to do anything with it. I mean, you're, you're in people's front yards. You're, you're up against rock. You're up against a variety of things. Now, Fair Avenue, the road commission may be willing to participate in because that is a road that's open to trucks. You know, that's part of the network. They have taken a formal position that until the city of Marquette allows truck traffic, they will do nothing that connects city roads to township roads. Five, that's why, that's why Grove Street sees no action, no activity, because it's restricted for truck traffic.
And we did, or the previous boards did.
Township restricted on Grove Street.
We did.
Years back in the seventies, nineties.
And that's why the road commission does no work on Grove Street, because it's, it's not an all-season road for truck, for commercial use. We have a restriction of five hundred, was it five tons, I think it is. Is it five tons, something like that?
But when you talk about Trailbridge Park, when you really look at it and the building and the number of new homes they've put out there since I've been there, you only have three entries in the Trailbridge Park.
Right.
That is a problem, too, because of the traffic. There's tremendous amount of traffic in that. And it starts at five o'clock in the morning on Fair Avenue. And it doesn't cease until about eleven, twelve o'clock in the morning, and then it picks up again about two thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon.
Through Trailbridge, you only have, really, two. You only have Fair and Warner, pretty much.
But is that something you wanna work out here or you just wanna say?
No, I'm just, no, I'm just bringing it up as, this is something that.
Key roadways, I think that's important, whether it's these four roads or we add more or take some away or whatever. I think that's something we need to leave on here. If we have consensus, we need to have something for roads.
I think Jason's right. You have a, you have a major category with a number of subcategories under it.
Yeah. Okay, how about recreational millage? Is that something we wanna really pursue?
I believe it needs to be explored, whether anything comes up or not, it needs to be explored.
That's a real way to continue the uptick in the support of recreation that we've had. You know, when I first started in two thousand eleven, I asked Randy, "What do we got for recreation?" He said, "About forty-five thousand a year." I was like, "Great, we're gonna turn that into a hundred and fifty thousand every year." And since then, I don't know what that number is anymore. And so it gets harder and harder to keep improving upon, you know, the, let's say, the Schmidt Park or the Lyons Field area plans that we have. It gets harder and harder to figure out if we can go for a grant or something, but if we had a set number that we knew for the next five, ten years, you know, point two mills or point, point zero, I don't know what, that would certainly allow us to do a lot more planning, knowing that, okay, we have this amount of money. We know what these projects are gonna cost. We know that the grant programs are really favoring these types of developments. So if we're successful, we're gonna extend that money even further out. If we weren't successful with grants, then we could still know that we had that to work with.
But be cautious with millage questions because you have a cap.
Yeah. One of the things we got on our plate.
We don't have much left.
That's why I wanna educate the voters. When they go out this year, they need to know where their money's going. I wanna make sure that they understand their tax statements.
Ten, ten mils is your maximum cap.
We're at around nine, I think.
Well, we got four point nine for general operating. You got point six for fire, point four for, for police. You got not point, you got not, point nine for library. One and a half for local roads, 'cause you're, you're getting, you're getting close.
Get rid of the point nine for library.
Yeah.
Well, it keeps getting voted in. That's a voter choice. Yeah, and that's what, that's what Roger Rans been saying. You need to recognize what, you got a lot of wants, but we have a cap on what we can ask.
Well, and they keep saying recreation. So if we try to pursue that, how important is the library?
Well, you've got the Iron Arrow Strill. You've been funding recreation out of your general fund, four point nine.
Yeah, if we're trying to do what they want.
That's, I think that would be supported, too. Even, especially if it was a small millage, and we can figure out some numbers for you, but I think if it was a.
I mean, they're saying they want it. You should at least ask the question, what then does that?
It's the same with the roads, right? They offered a self-tax with the roads. And I think they would do the same for recreation if we were able to, you know, denote exactly what that was gonna be used for. We have some plans, okay? Here's our rec plan for the next five years. I think that would be supported.
Right, and the way you need to do that is to educate the voters, like you've been saying, and that is before, before you have the votes coming up. How many are on the, we've got some millage questions that are gonna be on the, the primary, aren't there? Not the, the media primary, that's presidential primary, but the August.
August, yeah.
The August, when you're gonna have, so before August, somehow we need to educate the residents that, understand you have a lot of wants. The township has a maximum cap of ten mils. We're now at eight point two or whatever it is. Here's how it's allocated. When you vote, keep this in mind. So do you wanna put nine, you know, point nine mils to the library, or do you not? I mean, really, that's where you're gonna be at.
If they do, that's fine. I don't care.
I agree with the data.
I think if they're educated as to what the hell is going on, they would not vote for that. They don't know. I mean, if we offered them each a life membership to the library, it'd cost us, I know, less money than what it does.
But understand how the voting goes.
It's the.
The problem, the problem is, a sizable number of residents don't vote on that question. They don't address it. So those that want it have carried the election, and it's been a relatively small number. It's not been huge.
Clerk Rattari and I were talking yesterday about this. How do you get them to understand in August, the, 'cause I've got her letter from the library. We're gonna have it on the agenda Tuesday. They wanna have it in August, but they're trying to see if it's fewer people coming out, they're gonna get a higher percentage. They keep touting that seventy percent of the township wants the library. It's seventy percent of who votes. So if, you know, Randy was saying, maybe we need to put this in the November election.
Who votes for that?
On the library question, correct.
Yeah, but you're right. It was any way you want. I mean, you can't argue seventy percent. That's what's passing up. That's what's passing. It doesn't matter how you split it up.
It is, but they're using this August versus November because they want fewer people to vote.
They just keep bringing it back until it passes.
Right.
Right, and that's what Quinn's doing again this year for what, the sixth time, the sinking fund? Putting it back on again. But the residents need to understand how it needs to be portrayed, and I think we can, in a narrative format, like on the utility bill, that there are a number of wants, recreation, and this, 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 all of these things. The township has a maximum of ten mils. We currently have this many mils committed to these items. When you vote, you decide how that millage gets spread.
Yeah, I asked Dulcey for something for the.
And we do, we have a pie chart, you know, we've used it before. That shows it just needs to be adjusted based upon current figures. But, but you're right, you know, you hear all the time, you know, like the marijuana question. Well, it wasn't forty percent or fifty percent of the voters. It was fifty percent of the ones that voted on that question. You know, and, and yeah, it could be, you know, that's fifty percent, but it's fifty percent of ten percent of the voters. You know, five percent. And that, and that's where you have to draw, you know, drill that down, and nobody likes hearing that when they've got that on their question. You know, the library doesn't like you to talk about it's seventy percent of twenty percent of the voters.
I don't think you have to nuke the library to have a, a small recreation.
No, no, no.
Not saying that, but the library is a yes or no question. They either get point nine or they don't. It's not a fraction of it or whatever, and that. It's not a fraction of it, or whatever, and that's a size, it's almost one full mil, taken out of that mix. On top of what's already committed to general operations, to road project, to Iron Heritage Trail, you know, all the things that are covered by millage. Why are they not in there, because it's a special assessment.
And all I'm trying to point out is if these people are either not voting for the library or roads, and they want, they're the ones that are asking for the recreational facilities, but they're passing the library. It doesn't make sense, where do you want your money?
That's what people don't understand about.
If absolutely everybody wants the library, that's what we need to do, just like the roads, it doesn't matter.
There's a couple ways you can educate that.
That's what I'm hoping.
You could do it on an improved, a more user-friendly township website. You could have a, a link that takes you to the page you're talking about, and you could explain it all right there on the website. You could put together a presentation in here, and put it on YouTube, that explains it to them.
Yeah, I talked to.
And you could offer something a couple times in the community room, that explains it to them. It's not that hard to get the message out, but I don't think putting it on the back utility building gets the message out.
We're going to start with that.
Because, because most people, I don't think.
Right away.
How are you going to get them to come to a meeting?
Yeah, we still have to get them thinking about this, that's why I keep mentioning it.
That's the issue.
You're getting donors.
That's what I meant, what I was kind of spitting to you guys earlier about the, the manager's position, is that you have to be, you have to engage all of your community, not just sections of your community, or anything, you have to get the input from everybody. And there's just a lot more modern ways to do that on a more regular basis, whether it's an on, a quick online survey, or.
Which, which just happens to be on page two of the calls. But even with that, after your population doesn't belong one.
What's that?
It says.
On the phone.
Oh, the user-friendly.
That's, that's.
Dave, flip the page again.
What page are we on?
So Ernie can stay up with you.
Where's your page numbers?
Right there. Second one from the bottom.
That's one of the other, you have to recognize that you have an extremely diverse population in your thirty-nine hundred. You've got a segment that is in Lost Creek, that don't have smartphones, that don't do the internet, and you know, how do you communicate with them?
We go to Lost Creek.
Okay.
And present.
Yeah.
We did before.
And we invite them all down there for something to do that day.
Yeah.
Write them down there for donuts and coffee, and you get them all.
There you go.
Yeah.
Then incorporate the census into it, you know, we can do more than one thing at a time.
Yeah, all kinds of those things, and that, you know, yeah, you're, you're right, you can do that.
I remember having this argument with.
You can't get no people together for a worship.
Right.
So, you know.
With that Supervisor Adamini, in the beginning.
I remember meeting over there for a sign order.
And I was coming up, you know, I was asking questions, well, how do we do this, how this, and he looked at me, he went like this, and he said, how far do you want to take this? And I said, as far as we have to, we need to communicate, we need to tell people what we're doing.
I think one big thing guys.
So, so we want to leave increased township facilities and storage area on there?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, we're leaving, we're leaving the recreational millage, right?
We what?
To have a discussion about recreational millage.
We left it in there, right?
Yep.
Okay. So we only have two on page one?
Yeah, two, and then two on page two.
What, two on page two?
The storage space.
Yeah.
And the user-friendly webpage.
Okay, do you want, any of the other ones on there?
Uh, we need to talk about the access somehow, whether it's security, handicap.
Good place to talk about it, just leaving out a strategic plan.
Right, so I think we need to leave that there.
What are your senior day programs? I think that was.
That was on the idea list, so there is.
Okay, good.
That, that was, I had that down for a long time.
And I.
Only because we don't treat our seniors.
And I think that's a no cost.
Yeah.
No big problem, I think if it's down there.
It might be coffees and cookies.
It'd be something we could actually get done.
Well, and we cannot.
The low hanging fruit.
But we can educate that part of the population that way then, too.
The biggest thing about that, they're in here, they're being, you talk and talk and talk.
And then you could put on your presentation on the screen.
Right, the big screen.
If I'm not mistaken.
Not the little one, the big screen that we've already budgeted for.
If I'm not mistaken, we started, we set a budget for, the Lyons Club gives a, a jockey, five hundred dollars to start that program down there, and it's going Tuesdays and Thursdays. And jockeyed for seniors.
See, I don't see anything on page two you want to take off. Most of that is, is easy stuff to achieve, or it's important stuff to.
I don't know about the base of volunteers, and I don't know how we can do that differently, but we need a planning commissioner right now.
That can go under the.
Are you volunteering? You better move into the township.
Well, we need, you don't have to move into, ask it, ask it a question.
You could put that under community outreach, that fits nicely under there.
With the seniors?
And the, well, and, and that too, actually, develop community room, senior day program, that can go under facilities. And the, uh, increase the township's base of volunteers can go under explore opportunities to communicate.
Okay.
Okay, Randy?
Sorry you keep coming back to this, but you can't talk about any of that until you decide what you're going to do with your facility.
But that's one of them.
That's one of our things.
So, yes, it is, increased township facility, office, and storage space.
You're talking about potentially improving video capabilities of your community room, before you've decided whether you're going to have that.
No, not before.
The top item on, uh, that second page is increased township facility, office, and storage space.
How are you going to do that?
We don't know yet.
That's why it's on here.
That's why it's on the strategic list.
Because if that can't happen here, your first item is secure a location to have a facility.
See, I just can't know what that has to happen there after we get done with the study.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want to buy that land over here, we can use this for whatever we want, put the community center down here.
You can also move the community center.
And all our storage.
We can move the community center north, and wait, and redevelop.
There's not enough room.
Can't go further north, because there's groundwater sources in the side of the hill north, can't go north.
We can't go north by sixty feet?
Can't go north any further than you currently are.
That's why we stopped the parking.
That's why you've got the big drainage field right there, because that's the headwaters of your streams down here.
Okay, so we've narrowed this down to one, two, three, four, like five, we pretty much have five. Would you agree, Dave? Are you fixing it now?
I've got two on, yeah, I've got two on first page, uh, we've combined, uh, two of the five, so that we have three on the second page.
Okay.
Okay, and the only thing we got on the fourth page is, or the next page is here, improve township own property on County Road four ninety-two, uh, to improve one of the access drive.
That doesn't even need to be on a separate page.
Well, it just happens to be there.
Well, what I was thinking, I'm already thinking beyond that, is print it, are you hooked up to the printer?
No, no.
I was, I don't have my computer.
I can take care of that.
All right. Now that we have some focus. We can have another meeting that says.
It's not on there at all.
How do we pair this down, where do we start, you know?
He's going to come up with a plan.
Yes, he's doing it right now, actually, that's why I thought he could print it, that's why I asked him to put this printer in here, so we could use it.
I guess the reason I keep coming back to that is because we're running out of land.
Yes.
Selling quickly, so if there's going to be any consideration for relocating the township hall, or moving the community room to a different location, you better tie up the land now, and there's only one piece left.
I agree.
So we're on the other side of the building across the street, that's the only piece that's left, the bigger one, the lap-sized piece, big enough, just got sold to Fish and Wildlife.
This is six acres, I'm not sure we need six, if, you know, we need to have that conversation, and I do think that that needs to be the first one that we talk about.
Can we, can we move salt on that end of the building, you know? Get enough room over there.
No, there's water right there, too.
You can't go that way? There's no room. You can't go up. It's not designed to go up there.
No. Yeah, what?
We build a five-year building?
I, I disagree with the can't go up theory, but shouldn't we be better off to have somebody actually take a look at it with, and say, engineering-wise, speaking?
I thought they said that.
What if you stopped all the, uh, all reservations for twenty twenty-two, and you took down the community building and added another floor?
Can't add another floor to this building.
Yeah, I don't, I think they said that in the beginning.
You said take down the community center, and then rebuild that with a second floor. Isn't that what you said, Jason?
Essentially.
Yeah?
It's just an idea, but yeah, I mean.
You know, it's just the size of the community room. Doesn't improve, improve storage, doesn't improve any of the other things you talked about.
Or the community room could be on the second floor with a view of the lane.
Then we need a elevator then.
What is the asking price of that property?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
He can put a.
We don't even know what the asking price is.
Yeah.
But that's got a lot, that's got that great big rock you have to get rid of too up there, you always want a piece of the rock.
It's flat enough.
Well, fine, oh, yeah.
It's, it's workable, you put a community building over there, it's still in the neighborhood, we've got the parking, we could do a whole section for storage. We could include even some of the fire department storage, if you wanted to make a bigger building, share the cost. Turn this into any kind of, or we could just do the community building, put storage over here. Community room, whatever you want to call it, we could move office space over here, my, I was thinking maybe planning even, you know, if we had a bigger department. If we needed more room here, take our conference room back, little one, there's, I mean, you could just take this puzzle and kind of piece it together and see.
The key is, is you need a piece of land somewhere.
We know we need a garage or something, okay, we're paying for storage.
How do we start, we don't even know the, or what they're asking for the property.
We could get them to hone it down, depends on how big of a building we want.
Yeah, it comes into, they, they're in a, like, this building was built on a design build, so everything was kind of rolled together, including the building and the land. And I think that's probably the direction that they would go.
That's what Chuck wants to do.
Somewhere in the neighborhood, but one, one seven.
Yeah.
Land and building, both.
But that's all six acres too, I think.
Yeah, and we would want to, you know, a little area for parking, or, you know, whatever.
What's this building worth?
That's what I was going to ask.
Well, and it has commercial value, but then you're going to need a bigger piece of property, which you don't have available.
Acres we have here, it's only two or three, right?
Well, this building, you know, Dan's question, this building was two point four, how many I think it was, as it sits, land and, land and building.
But how many acres do we have, including the parking now?
Is it close to, is it close to five?
I'm, I'm looking right now, how, how, I'm sorry, say that question.
It's close to four, four and a half acres.
Here?
Here.
Two.
Yeah, I thought it was two and a half.
End of the parking lot?
I'll, I'll let you know.
No, gotta be more than two.
With the extra parking maybe now, but the original.
This property.
I think it was like two and a half, two point three.
Is a very marketable piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know where, where we're going, or what we're going to plan on, but as we do, we want to be aware. That we wouldn't be left with this, this is a very marketable.
It is.
Is that parcel big enough to do?
Do you mind knowing what that printer is over there?
Pardon?
Yes.
No.
Probably not, because of the way it's configured, it's long and narrow.
Do you want to design a two-story?
Well, you could, it's a long and narrow parking would be the problem there, you know, for, for the whole operation, parking would be an issue there. For a just a community center, community room, it'd probably work.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Well, I just asked if that piece of property over there was big enough for everything that we wanted.
That's why I was wondering how big this is, did you find out?
No, I didn't, sorry.
I thought it was two point three or something, and then with the, that's all parking.
Right around, yeah, right around two and a half. Uh, it would have been four, we would have gone all the way to Wright Street, yeah, sorry, I mean, not Wright Street, but, uh, where Fair Avenue comes out, it would have been four acres.
Ernie?
Cut that off.
Two questions. First one will lead me into the second one. Is there any reason we have to be north of forty-one?
No, other than being, being the buffer between Trowbridge and development area, this is, this is right in the center.
Okay, the other question is, we have five acres.
We do.
Yeah.
And that, over there.
Yeah, we already have that kind of session.
We have five acres that we could.
Good point.
It's zone corrected.
Look at that.
Yeah, zone correctly, the problem is.
Right next to a park, staff would go for a walk in the woods at lunch.
People were opposed to that because the bulk of the population would have to cross the Osbornia to get there, and there's no, there's only one intersection.
Commerce knows, great, we didn't have that before.
No, we didn't, but that's the only access, north and south.
Maybe I've lived in other places where, it won't make any difference, wherever it's at, that's.
So the printer's offline.
It might be shut, I don't know, it's blinking.
Are you trying to go to that printer, is it? Oh, yeah, probably, it might be turned off.
Okay, that's, that's the question.
I like the idea.
I don't know if it's worthwhile, but you have five acres.
We've talked about that in the past, and we had designs for it in the past, and it was always discounted because of the location.
Given, given.
Away from the bulk of the population, and that's why this was selected as the location. And that's why I was talking to Chuck about the piece at the top of the hill, that got sold to Fish and Wildlife before we could do anything about it. That was big enough to move everything onto it.
We could potentially talk to the Scots about a piece of their property, if it was a government facility, they may. They have six land divisions coming to them, and he was very pleased when I told him that the one that's potentially going to Fish and Wildlife is only a boundary adjustment, it's not a land division.
Well, you know, perhaps in discussion with another issue that we have with the, with the mall, a piece of property might be able to be carved off, close to the fire hall.
With the church?
I certainly liked the idea of having it all together. One HVAC source, everything together.
I did too, I don't know, I know that it was purely not.
Community center over here, and that, that to me is, I don't like that idea.
Well, it makes all the sense in the world, and that's where our original plan was, it got stopped at the last minute.
Fire and everything was going to be together.
But.
I mean, I would, I, I originally, I had nothing to say about it, but I would have liked to have seen the, the township hall and fire hall all together.
That would have been the ideal, but it, that it just wasn't going to happen.
Well, I know it wasn't going to happen, but.
And, you know, now, you know, for proximity purposes, we do have, you know, where Chuck's storing the snow over there behind the fire hall is a, is a potential site. But depends what happens with another property.
Well, they're not going to sell it for one and a half times less than they paid for it.
Well, we wouldn't need the whole thing, we only need part of it.
Right, but they still, I mean, it's possible.
But if they're stuck with it, it may not be as valuable. So, um, I mean, there, there are a couple of opportunities, or a couple of, couple of potentials, but they're disappearing quickly.
Aren't you guys at all worried about what the public's going to think when you want to build a new building?
Yeah, we've talked about that too.
We got somebody who wants this building.
Well, no, I mean.
They gotta have it.
Certainly, yeah, yeah, sure, I mean, that's, that's an issue, we underbuilt, we underbuilt when we built this. It was, you know, less than six years, it's full.
Unless we give up the community room and use that, and I don't think the public wants us to do that.
That's used a lot.
Yeah.
It's a great asset for the community.
Yes, yes, no, we don't want to give that up.
There's some, some form of it.
Randy, I think you told me probably two years ago at least, that you were concerned about the storage, and we had the conversation during a budget session about why are we still paying storage? And we've talked numerous times, well, how about this lot, oh, next week it's sold, well, how about this lot? And he's talking about back here, I'd like to, Pete, you were going to go back and talk to these people back here, and we were talking about a bridge, we could do a couple different things.
We're going to do, put a bridge here, or something like that, and put Ryan's Alley there, and he just got the garage, and, you know, Steve only got that garage in the house, you know, there's not much property to plant.
Do we have the ability to just put a, like a, an accessory structure on the north end of you? You can have, you know, climate-controlled storage.
Like a garage, yeah.
Yeah, and you can have a side that's not climate-controlled, and put some equipment there, or whatever. I don't, in my view, and I don't see it the same way Randy does, or maybe any of you, but I don't see how we've outgrown the building yet.
Maybe not staff-wise, but storage-wise.
Okay, well, then.
Storage-wise.
Ask Cornerstone, hey, is it against your covenants to put up a building that looks just like this, but it's going to be a little bit smaller?
The only issue with the covenants, you can't store anything outside.
That's fine.
Well, that was my question, and I asked if we had room down here, and I was told no.
Maybe not for a whole other, like a large principal structure, but for an accessory structure, that's the easy button, is to just build a, build a building. That could be building your grounds right north of us.
We need.
Still not working?
A garage.
Didn't you connect the one in the, in the office?
But the thing is, that we're talking.
You know the number of it?
Four fifty-eight?
We talked about these things, and like we mentioned, then all kind of property's gone. We've been talking about, you know, buying behind the fire hall, why more over here?
Yeah, we lost the fire hall, we wanted to do that.
But if, Pete, if that, if that property over here doesn't meet our needs totally, then there's no sense discussing it.
Exactly.
Let it go to somebody else.
Whatever you wanna, what do you want? What's your needs, you know?
Exactly.
Well, we can bring Chuck and Fred or whoever you want in here.
I mean, don't be in the hurry to spend one point seven million dollars on a piece of property that doesn't meet our needs.
Now, the whole concept we're talking about there was to be storage, to be satellite office space if we needed it and to solve some of the fire department's storage and training issues.
I think we might have some room on.
Which can all be done right out here.
Yeah, and the efficiency and scale and politically, I just think it's a much more viable option than. Hey, we're gonna build a new building. We just built one like four years ago.
What the hell are you doing?
Exactly.
If we had a, somebody who was interested in this, that would be the place to start.
What we're doing is what you talked us into. That's gonna raise it.
Lynn?
What?
Even if we had somebody interested, then we still can't use that piece of property because we can't build what we need on that one.
You know.
That's twice the size of this property.
Randy just said we couldn't. It's not big enough.
It's not deep enough.
Want to know how much, how much, what do you wanna put there?
It's narrow. I mean, we haven't talked about putting this footprint. The question then becomes parking. If we relocate the whole thing over there because of the configuration.
No, there's not enough parking, not enough room there.
Just because of the way it's configured.
It's not big enough.
Which?
Next door.
To put a whole new building, but, yeah, to replace this.
There, there?
No.
Or a board?
No, I was just talking about the community room there with storage. And then we could do whatever we want to hear.
How do you control a community?
All we need is storage.
That's just it.
What do we need?
That's just it.
I've got a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, that's, that's four hundred and some square feet, I mean.
We have three, how big are our storage places?
Ten by ten?
Ten by twenties.
So, okay, you need ninety square feet.
Talking about a seventy-foot something, either seventy feet deep or square.
That's all cold storage.
Cold storage, that's cold.
I mean, that's just cold storage.
Right, yeah.
What else do we need storage for? So we got ninety square feet that we need so far. Or let's say, let's double it, let's say a hundred and eighty square feet. That's way more.
No, you're, you're.
You're short.
You're nine, you're not nine hun, or you're at nine hundred square feet. You said ninety?
Well, you, ten by twenty is.
Three of them.
Ten by twenty, I have three. Three, ten by twenty.
So thirty by sixty. Cause I knew there was a seventy. We're talking about seventy feet.
Yeah.
Whether that's square or not depends on the property.
Well, ten by twenty is two hundred square feet.
Right.
Six hundred square feet. Let's add, let's double that for future growth, twelve hundred square feet. There's nothing, nothing to say that the garage can't have two floors on it.
Yeah, we got a storage hub. Probably needs maybe one garage bay or at least a, a couple mandor type things.
Correct.
To move stuff in and out.
Could have an office for building your grounds.
Could have some kind of an office.
Rusty and an office upstairs and you guys are still sitting in your seats politically and, um, you know, we're not really buying a Cadillac. We're just adding on, I mean, and even I think, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of a liberal person, but I think that it's a pretty nice conservative approach.
The only two pages we did.
Well, that's why I said we either do nothing or we buy a whole new building. And we've got everything in between.
I like this building. I like the way it's set up.
We don't have a plan, you're not gonna sell a new building.
Yeah, there's little adjustments we can make to the doors or entry or ingress, egress, that's, but where we are, we'll never be here again. We're on the frontier of commercial development and we're very convenient to over fifty percent of your population, our population. Thank you.
Yeah, this is workable, Dave.
I think there's a solution to this problem of space. We just need to get somebody assigned to it.
You can come up with different options.
Because, because the day we tell the public we wanna put up a new building is the day I'm gonna resign.
I wasn't thinking of moving.
Because they wanna beat the recall.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
What page is this off of, David?
That's all of those.
Oh, they're all, oh, this is the new one.
That's the new one replaces those ones that you have in there now. Well, we did get something done.
We got a lot done, yeah. And I think our next meeting needs to focus on the building. What are we gonna do?
Well, I agree and I think in the meantime, we can find out if we do have room down here and.
And how much space we need.
Cornerstone would accept another outbuilding of some sort, would it look like, go from there?
Maybe if Cornerstone would accept.
By the covenants, he means.
Covenants is killer.
We looked at the covenants a long time ago and the only problem, you can't have a covenants, and that's why we couldn't put Public Works over here. If you can't, can't have any outside storage. If you put a building up down there, as long as it's all inside.
But I think it can't just be a garage. It can't look like a garage.
Garage door.
It's gotta, it's gotta look something like this.
Sure, yeah. That's all.
All the buildings kinda look the same.
Depends on what kind of door you put on it.
That's it. That's it. It could be anything you want inside as long as it look like something else outside.
Right.
Form basis only.
There you go.
All right, so.
Just hang pictures of window on the brick.
I'll have the kids come in and paint the door.
There you go.
There you go. So maybe on the next agenda, I mean, on Tuesday's agenda, we'll schedule another work session to give us a little bit more refinement.
More refining?
Yeah. Talk about how we wanna tackle these and we need to start with the building. And I agree with Randy. We need to figure out what, how we can keep functioning so that we can do all the rest of this stuff.
But aren't we doing, aren't we taking away what the strategic plan is all about? First thing you do is develop the strategic plan and then go after that.
Yeah.
Then, then once you say this is our strategic plan, now whoever's assigned to that, decide what we're gonna do with the building.
Oh, finish it off, you mean?
Yeah, finish the strategic plan first.
Why couldn't we do this at the next meeting?
Was it one of, one of the items of your strategic plan?
Right.
Yeah, we gotta get that community room sorted out, telling you, with the AV stuff. And I did make the call at you. Nine oh six, the girl's out sick today, but I left her a message.
Okay.
We just need them to update their proposal, but I'll do it really on the cheap, you know, drop it on screen, installing projector, a receiver to allow the sound to mix through there with the microphone.
Separate the sound.
And perhaps, uh, you know, those eighty-inch TVs now are a couple grand at Best Buy, so.
We've got ten thousand.
Even in here, I don't know if these, these probably work for in here.
How much will approve for that next one? Wasn't it ten?
Ten.
I think it was ten, yeah.
We just got sixteen thousand.
That's what that's supposed to go for.
Well, yeah, I want it to be something that's state-of-the-art. Remember when, remember when we opened this building and the city came in here and saw our TVs and then they went and put eighty-inch TVs in their boardroom? That's, that sticks with me, right? So I want our area to be top-notch because it gets used. Huh?
Hundred and twenty inch.
Very well, yeah.
We need to have recliner chairs and just photograph it.
Executive leather.
Just get my chair with a screen in front of them on every chair.
And I don't know, has anybody been into, has anybody been into Border Grill recently?
They're yesterday.
I would do takeout.
Because these canvas prints, and I've got a lot more pictures since I first took these in two thousand eleven or what's around here. They make a new format. It's, it's, it looks like glass, but it's actually like a, a polycarbonate.
Kind of, yeah.
And it's really nice. And I really wanna redo all the photos in here too because it's been seven years now and we should probably freshen that up. All of those things I think about in my mind as a potential manager, but also as just your, the guy in here that does that kinda stuff. And the other thing is, it would be a really cool time with a new manager to rebrand our logo and maybe do some different stuff with that. You see a lot of communities have these more modern logos, um.
I'd rather have a more workable website.
Well, we could do that too.
That really needs to be.
Well, that goes all, that goes with it, yeah. It's all part of community outreach. That would put, you know, website and all that stuff under, under that umbrella. Yeah, there's lots of opportunity to modernize and make things cool. And I know you guys get stressed out about your jobs, but this should be fun. You know, you're, you're using taxpayer dollars to improve everybody's quality of life. And how do you do that? Well, that's what you get paid to do.
Today.
Should be fun.
Can anybody use some board from home then?
Today we what?
We worked on three, we came down to three major items on your strategic plan. Facilities, roads, communication. Everything you talked about today fit in those three categories.
Do we need to look at the SWOT analysis before we approve this or did everybody kind of read this?
It would be nice if just everybody commented on it and struck out the ones they don't think belong enough. They think another one needs to be added, just add it and just.
Are you talking about the goal statements you had here?
SWOT analysis.
SWOT, yeah.
Okay.
And just do it that way.
You took mine.
Your what?
My SWOT analysis.
I gave it back to you. Oh.
Took it out, remember?
Throw it away.
I gotta do it again, okay.
Then it doesn't hurt to go back to the people who designed those buildings and say, what could you do with this building? Expand it.
That's a good idea. You can, you can go up if you put all your supports in the right spot.